Dan, he ducks out.
All right, welcome everybody to the Rader Schedule Board Meeting. The Interstate 35 Board Director is Monday, April 22nd. We'll start with a call to order. Nathan here.
Dan here.
Melissa here.
Monica here.
Scott here.
Ross here.
All right. Do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll review the I-35 mission statement district priorities. The Interstate 35 Community School District exists to develop lifelong learners and responsible, productive, successful citizens in an ever-changing society. The district priorities are to articulate and support a cohesive, student-centered pre-K through 12 vision for continuous school improvement, engage in effective teaching and relevant learning for the 21st century, and operate with fiscal integrity, efficiency, and effectiveness. Next, we'll discuss and approve the agenda item. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Not on entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I second it.
Your proper motion seconded. All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries.
Okay. The superintendent, I'm sorry, we have an open forum. Residents, I skipped on the next page already. This is the public hearing on the proposed property tax levy. So, opening statement, I guess from being the board president, this is a levy that was published on April 10th in the Madisonian.
Yep.
Okay. And this is the discussion. Any community members wish to speak on the property tax levy are invited to do so now. Seeing no one seeking the floor to communicate, or I guess communicate with the board on the proposed property tax levy, we'll close the public hearing. Next, we'll move on to the open forum. Residents, students, parents, guardians, and staff members of the district may address the board about relevant topics. Those who wish to speak must sign up at the beginning of the meeting. The speaker's participation is limited to five minutes per meeting. We ask speakers to remember that our law prohibits board from discussing specific employees or students or their performance. We're going to start off with a student who would like to talk with the board today and has a presentation. Ms. Allison Oser could come up and we're ready to receive.
Bear with me, everyone.
Yep.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. Now that's how it works. Hello, everyone. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Allison Oser. I'm a senior here at I-35, master conservationist, and an intern for the Madison County Conservation Board. That's pertinent to what I'm here to talk to you about because I am proposing putting native prairie species in the school's ditches and roadways. Now, my primary focus is this ditch right outside the library here between the high school and the CTE building because it's most suitable and most unused land. I also think it'd be ideal to do ditches around the school parking lot, the front area of the school, and towards the back greenhouse, CTE building. But I understand that some of these areas might change with new developments, and the front area is a recreation area for public during events. So, I understand, but my primary focus is this ditch right outside the windows here. Now, to establish a little background for what I'm talking about, roughly 10 acres of the school's 50-acre property is harvest surfaces. So, that means 10 acres of impervial ground, and with a 1-inch rain, that would generate 271,370 gallons of water runoff, collecting pollutants from all the school's surfaces, draining directly into Broadhorn Creek, which feeds into South River. Broadhorn Creek begins here across the main road of Turoe further back in the town, however, there are major drainage waves that lead into that watershed. Furthermore, our current prairie area is two acres. It used to be three, but it got taken with the construction of practice field. And Mrs. Mayers spent years establishing this with her science classes as an education area, and it's threatened to be reduced more by the new sports complex development. Here we see that according to this concept map, there will be a future prairie and outdoor classroom proposed in these plans, however, that future prairie is reduced even more than two acres that currently exist, and outdoor classroom is situated on the far east end of the campus. So, why is prairie important? Well, more than 80% of Iowa was once covered in Tall Grass Prairie. That's 30 million acres. Less than 0.1% of that remains today. So, respecting this ground type and reconstructing it is an homage to our history, an homage to what Iowa once was. And it serves much more benefits such as environmental, as I already touched base on water runoff, native plants and their root systems are incredible at soil retention and water filtration. And educationally speaking, this serves as an area for students to study, study science, not only science, artistic inspiration. I spoke with Mrs. Mayers. She said that her classes would benefit from an area that's centrally located where she can take her classes for drawing designs or other such artistic projects. And visually speaking, the showy textures and colors, especially outside these nice picture windows of our high school library, would be very fitting for our school to be a more progressive idea. Oh, go ahead. So, as I previously mentioned, I am an intern from the Madison County Conservation Board. I have approached them about this project, discussed it with them, initially brought out a board member and an intern, and looked over the ditches I had in mind and discussed this project. And then I took it to the natural resource specialist and discussed it with the director. And in conclusion, we have their full support if we go forward with this project. That means they will help us prepare the ground, acquire the seed, and maintain it for years to come using their specialized equipment and manpower. I understand I have a limited amount of time, so I will leave you with this fitting quote by Aldo Leopold, who is a famous Iowan considered the father of modern conservation and ecology. It reads, "The privilege of possessing the earth entails the responsibility of passing it on, the better for our use, not only to the immediate posterity, but to the unknown future." I'd also like to just leave this open for discussion because I understand there might be many questions, comments, concerns that I'd be more than willing to address.
Well, first off, thank you, Allison. That was very impressive, also mind-blowing, the city. Thank you.
Appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak about this.
So, your main proposal is out here, and this ditch right here is what you were thinking of.
Yes. It has a good mix of wetland area and upland habitat that would create a mesic-prairie mix, that is mixture of both wet and dry components. So, it'd be a nice scene to capture all the different types of prairie there is.
Have you looked into, can we get a CRP or wetland area and get assistance from the state or federal?
That is a possibility, yes. I've been looking into lots of grants. There's roadside, plant grants.
Well, not just the grant, but to pay us every year.
Revenue? That is an interesting concept. I have not looked into.
Well, CRP ground, I mean, I've got it on one of my farms, and I can't imagine the wetland would not qualify for part of it.
Absolutely. Yes, that's a very viable option, I believe.
I would just throw in that the second grade service learning is working with the Madison County, I'm not going to say the right name.
No, Conservation Board, yes.
Yes, and so they've been out and they collected seeds, and they're supposed to grow the seeds and plant the seeds. So, like, in my mind, I was seeing all this, like, long-term, if, like, the service learning continues, second grade could be, you know, year after year facilitating the health of the...
Absolutely. And to further that point, the Conservation Board has been doing monthly visits with the second graders. I've participated with some of these visits. Educational opportunities, talking about Iowa and our land values, and this absolutely would be an opportunity to further their education. They can do seed collection, soil studies, studies on the organisms because it would be a wildlife refuge. It's definitely an opportunity for educational value. And I'm here today with the naturalist from the Madison County Conservation Board, Amy Warkey. She's here representing the board if you have any questions for her. And she has also expressed to me that if there were a more centrally-located native planting area, that would appeal to her for more educational programs.
Awesome. Perfect.
I love it.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Allison.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Good job. All right. Our next speaker, we have Beverly James.
I'd like to thank you guys for letting me speak tonight. I work in the Transportation Department, and we've received an email from the superintendent about our interns' premiums going up. And we at the Transportation Department have been wondering why we're not all paying the same amount for our premiums now that the teachers are having to pay for their premiums also. We're paying more per month. And we don't understand why nobody in the administration is having to pay anything to help pick up some of the cost. We've all been talking at the Transportation. We just, I don't know, we're confused on where it's coming from and how the decisions Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. I think that's it for open forum. I didn't have any other sheets, so we'll move to the student representative report.
So, this one's pretty short. Prom was held on April 13th, and I think a lot of kids enjoyed that at Red Acre Barn. And there's after-prom, too. They had all kinds of fun activities. I think there's a jump house and laser tag and stuff like that. And then there's a Build My Future up in Des Moines at the Fairgrounds. It's where you can go and learn about different trades and stuff, for example, like bricklaying, mechanic work, and stuff like that. And there's about 25 students that went to that. And then a bunch of FFA stuff this, over this last month really. State convention was this past week. It was Monday and Tuesday. There are contests there, poultry judging, biotech, to name a couple. And then there's an FFA banquet, too. Many rewards were received to the members. And to kind of highlight, four members received their Iowa degree, and that was Cameron Hubdike, Darian Stark, Gracie Kirk, and Jetta Nelson. And we are having plant sales up at the greenhouse tomorrow and Wednesday night from 3:30 to 6:30. And then we had a celebration for completing the ISAS, and students were able to choose, like, what activities they wanted to do. There's watching movie, and then dodgeball, badminton, video games, and there's breakout rooms. And that's kind of like it. So, any questions?
You said five Iowa FFA degrees? Is that how many?
Four.
Four?
Yep.
Well, that's awesome. And how many kids went up to the convention, do you know?
There were, I want to say, 10 of us that went.
10?
And, yeah, we had fun.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What was your favorite thing at the convention?
Probably just hanging out with them because I'm friends with a lot of seniors, and it's, you know, their last year doing this, so, yeah. Any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the principal's report. Ms. Woods.
A little short and sweet this go-around. Just visited a little bit about our professional development this last session. As, geez, Ross just left me. And just, we're kind of in that lull between testing windows. We took our more comprehensive ISAS and are awaiting those fast testing screeners to finish out the year, which are tied to our school-wide goals. So, lots of work still to be done, and it's a fun time to walk around and see what's going on in the classrooms and the projects and things are getting started. So, any questions, comments, or concerns for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Weber?
There's going to be a lot of discussions tonight about funding in many different areas, one of them being facilities, but also I know we got different teacher stuff that's related in this and bills. But I wanted to make sure, I had community members that were asking about what are the actual needs. And so, I wanted to put, we have it in multiple areas. We have it on posters, we have it on the websites. That doesn't mean it's easy for someone that maybe isn't looking at it every single day to look at. So, I wanted to come up with a comprehensive list from the last two and a half years of what our committees, students, community, teachers, coaches, that came to everything, listed as what an actual need is. And I will highlight, I say "need," meaning you do not see a turf football field on that list. That's a want that the community said they wanted, but that's not necessarily a need. And so, we built that roadmap for years to come, the next 12 years, to try and take care of all of our needs based on that funding. And so, as we continue way past my board report right now and talk about it later, I just want to make sure we have a roadmap with lots of options. And at each stage, the board and the community and people are going to talk about those options and make what they want known. I want to make sure we have a plan. And so, if that funding changes, I'd like a plan before it changes because that's being proactive. That's what we did the last two years. I don't want to have to be reactive and not be able to fix some of the things that need to be fixed as we go in the next few years. And so, it's a list, doesn't mean it can't be added to, probably should be, and things can be removed as well. I just wanted to put it in one easy spot for anyone to look at. And then, as always, I'm open for conversation and talk. So, any questions?
Can you elaborate on that?
Which part?
On what you're wanting to do. So, I guess, I can't read that very well, obviously. I'd have to pull it up over here. So, one of my questions would be is, we have the wants, what are our needs?
So, that's what they're all listed right there?
Yeah. I can see them better than that.
So, which ones of those, so we have the plans to put in a new football field.
It's a plan, right? Doesn't mean it's actually going to happen. A lot that has to happen before that happens.
So, which ones of these would be ones that you would need to do? If that gets pushed off, which ones are the tough ones that would need to be done out at our current football field?
So, you're asking my opinion a little bit, right?
Yes, yes.
But, okay. Football, the lighting is a big one. Anyone that's been around the last few years, the lighting's gone up twice in the middle of our city games, okay? Which, not all the lighting, but pieces, but even one pole going out is kind of a problem. You can't see the end zone, you can't see the side. So, lighting's a big one. I'd say stands are a big one. Not only our stands with a lot of the areas we've been propping up, and I'm trying to Band-Aid to get us to that 27, 28 timeframe again that I was asked to do before, but also if, I know a lot of people don't go to the visiting side. The visiting side are pretty rough. They have no way to get someone on a wheelchair up to them like you can on the home side. And so, those are two big ones. There's also pieces on here that I'm trying to do with funds that we do have, things like the stairs going up to the press box. If anyone's looked at them, they're leaning quite a bit. And so, we have plans to have those done this summer, so at least, and that's not the public always going up there, there's only a handful, but at least they're safe. We take care of them. The track looks nice. Understand that is lipstick on a pig, okay? We painted that last summer, it looks great. We've had multiple companies come out and tell us sometime in the next six to eight years would be pushing it. It's already probably pushing it. But, so the track is one, but it's not today. None of these are probably today. Obviously, I worry the most about the lighting, but, and then there's other ones we've taken care of, like the audio. I went, that was funds we were able to find and use Fundraise for to go take care of things because you couldn't hear what was going on at games, it was crackling and things like that. So, so if we're talking those specific ones, and you're asking just about that area, those would be the ones I would name.
So, I'm looking at this fitness center upgrades, the machines and benches. When we bought those, I thought we bought stuff that was like main, like, the company is out of Iowa that can maintain those and do, like, that's stuff that lasts a long, long, long time. Why are we...
So, those, this is a slow...
Or is that like treadmills?
So, this is slow, like, what's happened is, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, you're at about 10 or 11 years on the fitness center.
Sure.
Right? And so, like, treadmill specifically is the one I get from community members. I put my name everywhere in there, and they email me because I want to know if it's been fixed. But those were used when we bought them. And so, like, we're trying, I've had companies come down, I have an actual maintenance plan that I started two years ago with a company, but they can only tighten those belts and do that so many times before it's like, hey, you need new belts. Well, the problem is, to get all new belts is like 25 to 30% of getting a new machine. So, it's really hard for me to go to Sharon or Ted or anyone and be like, hey, let's spend thousands of dollars on some belts when could I maybe just do a machine or two each year and figure it into an actual budget? None of this is wholesale, like, we don't do anything at once. But if you look, and I tried to post it on Facebook and everything, but internally, we took care of all the benches. The tops of the benches had completely cracked apart, were pretty bad, duct taped on quite a few of them. Between student council, between the booster club, and a little bit of funding from the school, like our athletic side, we were able to update all of those just about a month ago. And so, again, trying to keep things, but that's something that I want to put together a three-to-five-year plan of how can we get all those machines updated? Otherwise, you're going to be at 15 years and we haven't done anything. And the public, rightfully so, when things break down, and it's not easy to get a company down here to fix it either, you know what I mean? So, I'd like to start doing that.
And I was going to say, that's revenue, I don't know how much revenue a year from that, but that's revenue also to the school.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, and the memberships.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've seen that. The other question I had is, in order to do any of this other stuff, we would have to, again, borrow money on a bond, correct? Like the bigger stuff?
The big one, yeah, like the big ones.
Anything like lighting even?
Probably, yeah.
I mean, but, I want to be...
I mean, the last quote, and Sharon, you can correct me if I'm wrong, and the number, the last quote we got just over a year ago of Ballpark was you were about $400, $450,000 just for lighting a football field.
I mean, the lighting out there was $800,000.
Right.
I get it.
Right.
But that's why I was asking, is like, so any of this we'd have to do, we'd have to go, the community have to vote on a bond in order to even do this?
Yeah, because you're probably going to do it comprehen, I mean, you're probably going to do it in a package, whether it's renovate the existing, right? It would be a bond.
All right. Those are the other questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Woods?
I thought we were set a fun topic. I liked. My fun topics? I had lots of fun. We're having lots of fun in the middle school, maybe too much fun. First of all, want to thank Mr. McKinney and the band students had a great performance. You can just see the layers. As students are older and more mature with their instrument, it was awesome.
I'm glad to know I'm not the only one that happens to in the middle of a presentation.
Yeah, that's okay. And then, thanks to Mrs. Mayers' staff for supporting the hunter safety program. They went out to the field on Friday, so grabbed a few pictures from her. Pretty proud of our middle school students. I think there were 28, and then six high school students participated, made it clear through. So, that's always something good. And here's just some pictures that she sent back to us. So, congratulations to those folks. JA BizTown, if you recall, I talked to you about that earlier, some of the standards that the fifth-grade teacher, or sixth-grade teachers were using for math and ELA and reading. They finally, the students were able to go to JA BizTown on Friday, and if you scooch down to the pictures, it kind of just tells you the story. It's a city. Students take on a job role. They apply for three different jobs. They have to follow expenses. They have a bank account. They actually get a couple of dollars that they can spend at the restaurant that day. They can also purchase some items, and you can see those, but you can see some of the roles they have. The distributors are the male men right there, and they have clothes we had to dress up in. We had construction. Those boys struggled a bit because all they had were pictures, and there were no words, so they had to build it, tear it back down, build it, tear it back down. They were getting a little frustrated, but they hung right in there. We had a doctor's office. They took blood pressure, pretend, and they had to ask the doctors and the secretaries, they had to ask the student, you know, about their health. There were CFOs, there were CEOs, there were managers. The students all took these roles on. Fun day by all. What I'm most proud of is that our students did awesome, and the three women who were the leaders of JA BizTown said that our students were some of the best. They were smart, they got in there and they started working, and we had no problems. And the kids just, it was a blast. So, I can't speak enough for the students and the work that they did, as well as our teachers. And then we had 14 volunteers, and most of those volunteers, besides maybe five teachers, were parents. And they had to go up early, learn about their business so that they could support the students. So, like, the banker, the students had to go ask for a loan, and then if the banker head chief said, yep, you can have the loan, then they could go back to their business and begin working. So, lots of cool things that happened at JA BizTown. We had a mayor, we had a district attorney. The district attorney, Lola Fales, she was awesome. Her mom also helped support this work, but she was like the principal of the community in a sense. And she'd have to go give fines to students who were like going too fast or not staying in their area. And her mom goes, well, you're being like Ms. Woods. And she goes, I love this job. I'm like, we couldn't have found a better person for the job. So, it was a blast. And, you know, the students had to communicate. They also had to get up in front of other kids and their peers. It was just, it was just so much fun. Next thing, Mrs. Sarek, they've been working on in eighth grade with the book Unbroken, and the picture's not great, but they've had to team together and put information about that book and what they're learning. But I thought it was worth us talking about how proud our students are teaming together and working together to dig into a book and think about reality, and how does that also work in today's times? So, very proud of that work. And then some upcoming events. Oh, Mrs. Bloom's, I'm sorry. The Genius Project, I don't have a picture, but the students had to pick a topic, and they had to write an inquiry question for that topic. Those interested of them, the students took this on very bubbly, I guess, or excited because they actually got to write about something that they wanted to do. Some topics were chosen, were like raising and releasing quail to repopulate, developing protective welding gear, researching injuries and fatalities involved in the profession, and researching requirements and steps to obtain a sports scholarship, as well as the graduation and job placement rates of colleges. So, our kids are digging in, you know, and when we talk about these standards, what are students doing? We're not just sitting and getting. So, very proud of the middle school staff because they're working hard and they're giving our students some real application. Upcoming events, JDRF fundraiser for diabetes, that's next week. And then, if you scroll down, you would see all the... because they actually got to write about something that they wanted to do. Some topics were chosen, were like raising and releasing quail to repopulate, developing protective protective welding gear, researching injuries and fatalities involved in the profession and researching requirements and steps to obtain a sports scholarship, as well as the graduation and job placement rates of colleges. So our kids are digging in, you know, and when we talk about these standards, what are students doing? We're not just sitting and getting. So very proud of the middle school staff because they're working hard and they're giving our students some real application. Upcoming events, JDRF fundraiser for diabetes, that's next week. And then if you scroll down, you would see all the events that the middle school is going to be, students and staff are going to be involved in in the next month. So we do have a pretty busy calendar, but thank you. Any questions?
This might sound silly. When the kids are going through the JA Biz Town and just all of these different experiences, do we keep track of like what gets their heart, what they're excited about, like for future, like high school? I don't know. Is that anything to, they should remember? You would think they would remember, oh, I remember this, but.
Well, I've only, I've done this one other time at my old school and that's the day they remember, one of the days that they remember and the job role that they took. And and one of the things I asked the students on the bus, because I rode the bus with them, the teachers thought I was crazy, but I sent the teachers up because they had had pre-service. And I'm like, so what'd you like? Oh, Ms. Whitson, I didn't think it was going to be that fun. And then they're like, yeah, I learned how to write a check. I learned how to do this. So I think it, I think it's life and they were able to take on that role as an adult and they took it serious.
Well, hopefully they shared that with their parents and, you know.
No.
Very cool.
It is cool.
Yeah.
And I would recommend, and they do have a program, like the district can pay for the whole school to go sometime in the year to do different things. Junior high to high school, they do more on budgeting, real budgeting, which I think would be profitable for our students, whereas up to five and six, they do the JA Biz Town. So I think it'd be prosperous if our students had that opportunity.
I I have one question. I think I know the answer to this question, but I think the board, you guys would be surprised to hear, how long has Ms. Magers been doing the Hunter Safety class in the school? And how many kids do you think have been, you know, licensed and certified by the Iowa DNR out of that?
I don't know. That's a great question.
So.
You might know the answer.
Yeah, I don't know how many years. I think it's around four or five, something like that. But there's been over 140 kids that she has got through the the DNR Hunter Safety. That's just phenomenal, you know, teaching, teaching that. So and I got to participate that day. It was so much fun. Every kid had a parent out there. Kids were shooting trap alongside with their parents and they were learning, you know, safety and handling and discipline. It was just a blast that day. Obviously, I love that program, super excited about it.
I could get the answer for you.
Yeah.
No, it is awesome. I would rather have our students be trained than just go out and start shooting.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. And Mr. Beckel?
Just to kind of build a little more on what you're talking about, we do have the Middle School Career Day coming up.
Oh, yes. I forgot about that.
Where kids will be a little more reflecting on careers, so it's kind of nice that they play back to that. And to build on Mr. Webber, who was talking about lipstick on a pig, I think he's getting kind of excited for Kids' Pig Day. I think he's leaving.
How much?
My report, just kind of a poll, just our SRG team was looking at some data, trying to figure out like how are students feeling now that we've kind of progressed through the year, working with teachers on clearly articulating different things with SRG. And we just kind of wanted to get a sampling. The table on the left is a sampling or a survey from October 6th. The one on the right is from May 3rd, April 3rd, sorry, April 3rd. Thank you. But it's the same size kids, almost the same group of kids. I think the table on the right is about three less students. But it's just to get some feedback from the kids, like how well are these expectations being communicated to you? How well do you understand what's expected of you? Do you know how to get to a level four, a level three, a level two, a level one, all those things? And then the the survey also has some open ended questions that will give us some gold nuggets on how to continue to improve our practices. You can see the different numbers there, the seven and the 10. Those are from two different class periods. So one class period, seven, the next one at 10, and that equaled 17 yeses. And on the nose, the five to 11. And those are a sample of juniors and senior students. Just trying to get some, some good feedback from the kids, kind of see what's going on and give us, you know, kind of a place to continue to do some work. So I just wanted to share that with the guys, give you a chance to ask me any questions that you might have.
First off, thank you for for doing this and getting the feedback. So when you get the feedback from them, it looks like they're they're not only rating things or giving you potentially some actionable things and and you take that back to the teachers and are working with them and making changes and stuff? Okay.
So yeah, it's our SRG team meets every couple of weeks just to try to figure out how to continue to improve practices. And when you see the plus signs next to this, kind of how frequently that response showed up to.
That's what I thought.
Which kind of helps us like, okay, this is definitely something to focus on to help help our situation.
Just to make sure, when I was reading this earlier, I was confused. If you can scroll up, and I think you answered, but I'll make sure I understand it, where you had like the five and the seven and the 10 right there where it says yes, seven, 10 equals 17, so two different periods.
Two different groups of kids.
Two different groups of kids. So in the the first class period, there was five, or seven of them that said yes, five of them that said no. And then the second period, there were 10 of them that said yes and 11 of them that said no.
Correct. And that was the results from the October.
The October. Yeah. Scroll down, you see the other ones, okay.
Correct.
No, I was excited to see this on here and getting feedback. That was just one piece I didn't understand was the five and seven, so. Okay.
All right. Thank you, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beckel. All right. And Dr. Detler, the superintendent, report.
So I have a few adds to this. So we'll start with what's here. First, I wanted to make sure everybody had a chance to celebrate our Class of 2024. It's going to be that time where we have lots going on, recognizing all of their accomplishments and all of their next steps. It's really, truly a great time of year to see kind of your hard work paying off. And and I think the longer you're in a district, the more you realize. So I would imagine we talked to a first grade teacher and they would remember when these kids were in first grade and now they're going to graduate and they're going to move on and and to know that you had an impact on that. So we really want you to be as as involved in these as you can be. We have some that are obviously specifically targeted towards seniors, but some are open to the public. Fine Arts Night, if you've never been to that, I would strongly suggest coming to that because that's a phenomenal display of our kids and their their talents in an arena that doesn't really always get highlighted. So that's that's a fun night. We also have Awards Night for Seniors, which is the next night, and obviously they love the checkout day. They do a graduation practice. I think they do a senior breakfast still for them. The moms do that on that same day. So just a great time to celebrate seniors. So I wanted to make sure that we got that in front of you guys again, so you could you could look at that. The SRG, this isn't anything different. I will talk a little bit about the facilities update because we had a couple of what I call change requests, but I'll explain those. So the 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 information that we've compiled over the last two to three months, based on feedback from the board, feedback from the staff has driven the grading policies in the handbook. And so this is, I I know we've always had a lined version, a read out, or in some cases, a green out version. So this is just how it would read now, based on all the recommendations that the committee has taken and considered. So that is going to be the recommendation for the handbook. And this is something that we probably want to see on an agenda for approval within the next month or two, just because we have to change handbooks and get things updated. So I I would imagine that'll be something as Mr. Gibson and I work on the agenda, you'll see that as an action item over the course of the next month or two. The facilities update, we get a costing sheet. This is the work for our science lab renovation and our fields. There are two changes to this and both of them had to do with the alternates. So when we proposed the project, we had two alternates that we said, depending on what the bid is, we might take those off the plate. So one of them was doubling the batting cages. And then the second one was.
Parking lot?
Parking lot, thank you. So we were going to do part of the parking lot to to kind of be a fit for the baseball softball, but expand it if we could. So when we had those two things accepted as bids, there was a minor adjustment to the to the process work for the design and for the indirect costs. So they went up slightly from what the actual bid was, but it was based, it's the it's the portion of the contract that encompasses the whole bid and they didn't include that in the original. So this just reflects it including the alternate prices included in the update. So I can go through that in more detail with anybody, but they were pretty miniscule.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
So are you saying, who's asking for that money? DCI?
So in the in the case of the construction fee, it's the DCI. Yeah. So when they gave us the bid on this page, they had not included the additional cost for the parking and the.
For their percentage?
Yes.
Is what you're saying, for their fee?
For their fee.
Okay. I thought you were saying that they wanted more money to try. I was like, don't get drawn.
No, that's why it's like a $600 increase. Because it's just the difference in the, yeah, it's just the difference in the percentage.
Nope, that makes sense, thanks.
So that's that's on there. And this will be the format. If you guys want it in a different format, you can let us know. But it's got the bid day on there. It's got what the current contract is or how much has been spent. So it's got the cost to date. And I think as we've talked about repeatedly, that if there is a significant increase to any of these or an increase that that has to get approved. And so a minor change like this, I approve. It's a major change, it has to come to you guys so you can have that conversation and decide if that's something that you want to allow for. We do have a contingency in this project, which says, you know, if we have something pop up like this, we still have money to cover it. And so that's that's, this is the format that you'll see it in. If you want to see it differently, just let me know and I can have DCI run a couple of options for you. Any questions about the facilities?
They haven't, so they haven't requested any other change or anything else?
No. Okay, the other things that I had that I wanted to talk about because they just came out and I didn't put them on the agenda. We do have a legislative update. I have been in touch with, so the support staff met a month or so ago and did negotiations. And at that time, there was rumblings at the State House that they were going to try and get all of our support staff some compensation to about $15 was kind of the target. And so we didn't really know how that was going to be funded. We didn't know what that was going to look like, but that was what the State House was talking about. We negotiated in good faith, but we also said, if this comes to fruition and there is funding tied to it, then we need to be able to to have another conversation. So we signed what's called an impasse agreement to be safe so that we could have that conversation again if the legislators changed how how they were going to fund some of these things for support staff. I think on Friday night, they, the appropriations, we had not heard anything until Friday night, they closed, they they worked through this late Friday night and then the session closed Saturday. What they appropriated was $14 million to districts to increase wages, one time money. Okay? So I think everybody kind of understands what that means. So the way that we were, we talked to John Parker at at the department and one of the things that he had indicated was that $14 million is for all and all support staff employees. So if you break it down, it was about, do you remember the exact number?
It wasn't much.
Yeah, it wasn't much, but.
I can't remember.
We we figured it would be about 25 cents an hour for our support staff for the upcoming year, that our portion of the $14 million would be. And I'll get you the specific numbers for the April 30th meeting. I I think our challenge is it's one time money. And so that doesn't, it's not guaranteed beyond this. So I just touched base with Deanne today. I know that we're going to have a conversation with Frank, the president, to decide what that looks like. Is it something that we can give as a as a chunk payment, right? Or do we increase the salary for a year? I mean, there's lots that goes into this and I think we just have to be mindful of what it means long term. And so I just want you to be aware that it did pass the $14 million, but it is one time, so it limits. So we'll work through that, but that did happen on Friday. So if you've heard about it, I just wanted to give an update. The other thing I wanted to do is celebrate Ted a little bit, and he's not at all looking forward to this. But Ted is leaving to go to the Department of Ed, going to expand his professional skillset. So we're extremely excited about his his ability to do that and, but we want to thank him. And so we have a plaque that we would like to present to Ted, and I'll just read it. You can take the box. But it says, presented to Ted Bauer in special recognition of your 10 and a half years of dedicated service to the students, staff and community of the Interstate 35 Community School District. And I will say, just from experience, Ted's job is one of the toughest jobs in the district that nobody understands, right? This is the job that we all want to work and we all want it to work well, but it's really, really tough to make sure all of those pieces fit. And we've got an outstanding team that works with Ted, but he leads that work. And I I just want to thank him because he has done a tremendous job of balancing what I think is important, what the board thinks is important, what money we have, what the state decides for funding. And we are in a very good spot financially, if you look at our big picture, because of the work that Ted has put into that. And and I just can't thank him enough, but I I do want to recognize him. We are going to take a quick little break, if we can, to have some cake and punch for anybody who's here now that wants to celebrate Ted. And then I'd like to think we can convene again in maybe like seven or eight minutes?
I'll work one, ten minutes.
Will that work with you? 10 minutes? 10 minutes? Okay, so I'm going to give this to Ted.
Thank you very much. I appreciate working with all of you as well and Sharon and the previous boards as well.
So, yeah.
It's not just about me.
But it is right now. It is right now, it is for the next 10 minutes. It's about.
Six, next seven minutes? Surely is.
All right, we're at 6:58. We're going to get back.
Get back to it.
Get back to it. All right, the next item on the agenda is discuss and approve consent items, where we have the past meeting minutes, the monthly bills and financial statements, and the resignations and contracts. Dr. Detler, you want to walk us through that?
Yep, so the past meeting minutes is typical, monthly board and financial statements is typical. We'll come back to the resignations and contracts because open in a moment, we're going to talk about quickly. We sent out the fourth piece of our enrollment or of our financial picture piece. And it had information down there about enrollment. So it talks a little bit about how do you see where the open enrollment is from previous months? And it's always on the board agenda here. If we don't have any open enrollments in a given month, then we don't have a D there or an open enrollment under the consent item. So you can see students going in and going out through that process there. But that that financial series, just a quick word on that, we know that this is a lot of information and school finance is just a little different than business or home finance because we're restricted in some of what we do. So we wanted to get some information out to people after questions from the the last hearing. So we've created, and I think you have around a QR code that you can scan that shows you that whole series. It is four different parts and it talks about student supplemental aid. It talks about, looks like this. It talks about enrollment, talks about the tax levy, which we're going to talk about tonight. So hopefully this gives the public just a little bit more information about all of those things. If you want to, if you've missed one of them, we've done it over the last two or three weeks, if you've missed one, then they're just all comprehensively here if you want to go to that QR code. So that's just a little information about that open enrollment. Resignations and contracts, we do have some hires for Cook. Kristy Gurwell is hired as Cook, Jen Offield resigns as the head basketball cheer coach, Jen also resigns as the co-head football cheer coach. Those were shared positions with Nicole Faith, and so Nicole Faith will be assigned to the head football cheer coach. I don't know that we have a head...
That's open.
That's open, right? So if it looks weird, that's because that was a co-position, and we just moved it to one person. Alex Boyle resigns as the head cross-country coach. April Hughes is hired as the school business official, board secretary, and April is here, right? So you want to wave, there's April. So her first day here will be May 1st, she's been here a couple of times, working with Ted. We're super excited that she's a part of our team. We also have on here Stephanie Good hired as special education student services director. And if you remember, that's the position. We have Brayden Weber moving into dean of students, and, and activities director, and so it opened the need for some of our other programs to have a lead. So that's what that position is. I will say that there have been several conversations around, not, not the, the position, but how it works into our finances. We've had a lot of conversations about budget, and so I've had opportunities to talk with several board members about how this position fits in, but I think there are still some questions. So there are a couple of options. I know that, that as you board members make decisions, the most information is, is obviously the, the ticket. So if you, if you still want to have conversations about how this fits in financially, this position fits in financially, I would suggest that you, you have the option to table this until you get that information. If you feel like you have that information, then you can vote, you can pull out the position of student services if you want to. I would recommend putting it on April 30th, and just making it a point to visit with me before April 30th, so you can see the connections between the finances, what we're recommending in that position. So you have options. I know that there were some questions about the process, which we all, I think, agree need to be solidified and, and changed. Regardless if it was done in the past, we need to make sure that it articulates what we want it to be for this board, which is fine. I would say, I will draft that, based on the feedback, probably in board policy, send it to Danielle, to get her input, our attorney, and then that'll be something that you can make sure that you share with the, the next superintendent, to make sure it aligns with whatever they think is best practice. And then it can be modified, because of course you'll have to do three readings with that. So I know that there have been some concerns, and I wanted to address some of them, and let you know what your options are. Typically, we do the consent agenda items all together, but I do know that there were still some questions about how that student services position fit with the finance picture. So I just want to make sure you do your options.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Dentlinger. So as far as the discussion, the, the options that Dr. Dentlinger gave is, we could, you know, vote and approve the consent items. I could also entertain a motion to temporarily table this particular item, number seven, if board members feel they need to get more information until the April 3rd board meeting, or April 30th board meeting. But I, I do believe that that'll come with the stipulation that the conversations have to have with Dr. Dentlinger on the finance part between now and, and then. So those are our options. Is there any discussion among the board, or I'll entertain a motion if anybody has any?
So if they're moving, if she goes to the, this new position, we're not fulfilling her old position, right? Like, that's going to kind of resolve...
Correct.
Kind of like with, with some leaving, we're kind of just, kind of absorb it, correct?
Correct.
So we're not going to put a burden on anything else, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All righty. That was my main question.
So I would make a motion to approve the consent items with tabling number seven. Stephanie Good hired as special education student services director until our next meeting for further conversations.
It was April 30th board meeting. Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I will second.
They're properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, signified by aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
And that's stipulating that we do the conversations before the 30th. I guess all of that's worked.
That's all right, yeah. I will repeat what I said, stipulation, you know, for that motion has to have, and tabled to the April 30th board meeting. So that is also part of the motion, so.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. All right. Next, for items for discussion, we have a board policy, third reading of the 500 series policies for review. I've been looking at these for the past three months, it's an amazing amount of changes. I'll just recap the last two times I talked to you guys about this. Standard processes, laws changed, regulations changed, and as a result, our policies need to be updated. For a while, for various reasons, ours did not get updated, and we kind of got out of date. And where we get our sources from is the Iowa Association of School Board, they publish like yearly updates. The reason why there are so many changes here is because we're playing two, three years of, of catch-up on this to get us up to speed to be in regulations. I've personally read, you know, through every single one of these, it nauseam. I only saw one area that I had a concern with, and during our first reading of the policy, I had brought it up, what it is, and you can see in your notes that changed to that, where it, it says the board will consider slash vote to, rather than the previous wording, I said the, the board will, I can't remember the word.
I think it said will.
It was like a may versus shall type, type thing. Outside that, I would recommend to my peers, I, I do, I do think there is one thing we need to go back and look at, on the social media, and Dr. Dentlinger, you and I talked about this, I don't think it's worth holding this up necessarily, but I would like to bring it back. That social media policy, we need to make sure in the board section, it also is mirrored in the staff and, and support staff sections as well, that, that similar wording. But I think we can come back to that and, and update it. So my recommendation to, to the peers would be that we approve the third readings to get us up to date, and then hopefully, in the future, we keep up on this, it won't be so big, and we can each read them. So with that, is there any discussion? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
I motion to approve the board policy review.
I'll second it.
They're properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, signified by aye? Aye? Opposed?
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. So the second, board policy review, the reason why this is separate is because this is the second reading. This came out after we read the first reading of those policies, and this pertains to therapy animal dogs within the school. Dr. Dentlinger talked to us about that last, last board meeting, which was our first reading of this, and I think you had a few changes, I don't know if you want to...
It was just, yeah, we, we updated the certificate, so the language in the original said that the, the institution had to provide the certificate. Typically, we take certificates, we take transcripts from any employees, so we're just reflecting what we do with our other... So that certificate has to be there, but we can just get a copy from the, the handler. And then the other one was, just to update, I think we had a V missing on the vaccine. So we just updated the vaccine, to be accurate, the five-way vaccine that the animal would need to have. So just to make sure we were explicit in what those were.
Any questions on that one? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve the second reading.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading.
I'll second it.
They're properly moved and seconded, to approve the second reading of the funding therapy animal dogs, all dogs, all those in favor, signified by aye? Aye? Opposed?
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. All right. So these next three items are C, D, and E are kind of related to each other, board members, and the decisions of one could impact the decision on the other one. Obviously, this has to relate to the levy. So one of the things I'd like to do is just open it up for discussion amongst the board members as a whole, for C, D, and E, to have a discussion across the three of those. Am I right, in the right place?
I think it's C, D, and F.
Oh, C, D, and F. I apologize, C, D, and F. They're a little bit out of, out of order here. So we'll, we'll go ahead and open up for, for discussion, and then we'll have to, I believe, go through each one, once we kind of, you know, understand where, where we're at.
So you want me to give a little background on each one?
Yes, please, yes.
Okay, so the certified budget is what we've had the hearings for the last two meetings. We do have the proposed budget, which is published at 18.67340 per 1,000 valuation. There's been a lot of conversation about that number, and, and kind of where we rank in the state, but we've also, I think, done a, a better job, hopefully, over the last month, to, to help people understand how those numbers all work together. So that's the recommendation. I did leave it at 18.67340, because that's what I'm recommending to the board. We do have a couple of different people that we rely on, that are experts in this, our bonding agency, our financial kind of outlook group that we work with to, to determine long things with facilities and things like that. The recommendation from, from all of them is, for this year, it probably makes sense to leave it at the 18.67340, so that you can plan if you want to reduce that. But that doesn't mean you can't reduce it, right? You obviously have the ability to do that. I just left it as the recommendation, because that's what I'm recommending, based on feedback from those entities or those people. The geo-bonds ties into that. So part of our money that we get in our budget is debt service, and also paying off our bonds. For the last four years, we've been paying those off early, so that we're saving taxpayers' money on the, on the back end. So instead of our bonds being due in 2036, they're now going to be able to be called in 2029, and if we continue that process, then by about 2027, we'll be able to, to call all of them and have them paid. So we're, we're basically saving the interest on the back end of the, of the CTE and the auditorium. So that redemption of the geo-bonds, so if, if you're going to make a recommendation to lower the tax rate, then the amount we pay off, obviously, will be lowered. So it would extend to how long we pay that off. That's, that's kind of the caveat. So that would tie into, obviously, the certified budget. And then the last one is, is related, that F, I'm going to skip over E for now, but F. So this one ties into enrollment, and we talked about that just a little bit with open enrollment. But our, our biggest driver for funding from the state is our certified enrollment, and that's the number that we take on October 1st, by the number of people in our seats. And so we were down 20 students this year on October 1st, when we did enrollment. The legislator, or the, the mechanism in school finance that allows for that to happen, let's say that, you know, 15 people left the district for some reason, so they create what's called a 101% guarantee. And the 100%, the 101% guarantee tells a district that for the upcoming year, even if you've had a decline in enrollment, you will get 101% of what your budget was the previous year. The, the makeup, or the difference between what we get in state aid, which this year is 2.5%, and our portion of that, to get to the 101%, is property tax money. The total number of that is about $11,000 this year. So it's, it's really, I, I don't want to say it's insignificant, but we're not talking about a tremendous increase in property tax. It's less than, it's just miniscule. Like, I don't have the exact number, we can get it for you.
11,830.
Is the total, yeah.
For this one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ted.
So that does tie in, but it's, it's more about this current year than it is about projecting for next year. So this just gives us a mechanism that the board has to have a resolution, so that we can tax for that $11,830, so that we're at the 101% guarantee. And when we talk about that financial picture, that's the reason why we do that, is so that we have a year to make some of those changes that we know may need to be made, because we were losing enrollment. I know that, as we talked about Mr. Weber, the conversation about making sure we're planning, I think is kind of, when you're talking about downsizing, those plans are important. We don't anticipate downsizing in tremendous amounts, but we do see shifts every year. Some years will be stagnant, stagnant, will be steady, other years will be down some. There's been a year here where we've been up 15 or 18 kids, so we're just in that kind of mix of up-down, just a little bit. And so we just have to be mindful of that. So that 101% guarantee allows us to make changes as needed for the year that you're, you're working in. So other information about any of those, Ted, that I did share?
I think that's good.
Okay.
Okay. So thank you for that, that overview. When, members of the board, when you're looking at these, C and D, for the most part, kind of play into each other, I believe what I just heard was, F is, is kind of off, off to the side. So one of the things I, I would propose, you know, is we take a look at F first, and have discussion. Is there any discussion on that one, any concern? I know the other items, we might have more of a lengthy discussion on, but I don't want to assume. If you guys are good on F, open up for discussion, or entertain a motion to approve F, which is the ability to tax an additional $11,000 to get the 101% guarantee.
I would motion to approve F.
I would second it.
They're properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, signified by aye? Aye? Opposed?
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. Now we'll come back up to kind of C and D, and I think combined, since those are combined, I'll open up for discussion, and for members of the board on that.
I'll gladly speak on that. So I've heard a lot about we're in the bottom third. So I did bring up last, one of the meetings, that we're in the top of levy rates in this, like in the state, we're number four. I've heard quite a bit that we are in the bottom third for being property poor on that particular, you know? If you do the math and everything else, that still puts us in the like, it actually puts us in the top 2% of that, for what we're levying. To go to the fact of, you said that our bond company encouraged us to keep it at 18.67, they're going to want their money back as soon as possible, so we can vote and get new bonds. That's good business for them to encourage you to do that, I, in my belief. I mean, it just makes sense. Interest on a loan, you guys have done really good on what we've done thus far. I want everybody to keep in mind, I don't know if you've ever looked at a payment calculator for your home, or for your house, or anything else, but a majority of your interest on a loan is paid up for, like, paid in the first few years. That's guaranteed. Every loan is like that. Unless somehow you get a loan that someone does 0% or tells you, we'll break it out over 60 payments, what have you. The other thing I would say is, if we want to up enrollment and everything else, has anybody looked at the real estate market around here? How many houses are for sale right now? Very few, correct? I mean, you had to look for a house here, you had to buy land to build one, right? So...
A house for sale right here, though, just sort of...
I, I would say, I've seen that, that was, anyway, I would say if you want to, to up enrollment and everything else, another thing that would probably help us, maybe talk to your local investor or businessman, and see if they want to do a development or something, because right now, there's not even houses for people to move into this community. Like, there are very few houses. So what I would say, and I would like to motion forward, is either, and I'd also like to ask the rest of the board, how much time they've spent researching this stuff and looking at it? Not what somebody else has told you, or anybody, anything else, but how much time have you spent and looked into what's, like, how all this affects and what's going on? And I'm, I'm not trying to call anybody out, I just want to know how much time, because I spend a lot of time on it, to make sure that what I was saying was correct, not just an opinion. And I, if there's any open discussion on, with anybody else, I'd like to hear what they have to say.
Well, I have had discussions too, as well, with Sharon and several other administrators, administrator within the district, and one thing that concerns me is, we don't have a lot of amenities to bring in new students, so I have a concern with enrollment being down. Facilities is a huge piece for me going forward. I think that that's going to bring other school districts, other kids, especially with the smaller districts, I have a concern, so that's where, you're right, there's not a lot of amenities to bring in, there's not a lot of land to buy. So smaller districts, I mean, I think they're going to be looking to us, and so I think that's an opportunity. I think if we drop the tax levy, that's going to push, push out the current projects three to four years, so I have a concern with that. When we talk about renovations and what Brayden brought up, definitely, could we talk about that? How we can maybe look at the different phases? Open to that, yeah, absolutely. Let's prioritize. I know you've done that, you put that up there, let's dig in a little bit more. Do we need another work session to really dig in a little bit more? But I think, I think that there's been a lot of work that's been done up to this point, you know, so I, I would not be in favor of, of decreasing the tax levy at this time, because I think, I don't believe the savings outweighs the need, what we need here in the district. That's my opinion.
Mm-hmm. Come on.
I, you know, I, the difference isn't very much, so my vote would be to keep it where it is.
Just if you have any...
I'm not going to lie, I'm not overly had time to dig into this as much as most others have with other things on the plate right now. So I, I'm not sure I'm, I'm fully on the page where I need to be to, to make a fully informed decision. Do we have any reason or know why those 20 students enrolled out? Do we ever find that out? I'm not even sure.
Yeah, we, we, yes, oftentimes you get moves, but we can go back, we don't ask. Yeah, we, yes, oftentimes you get moves, but we can go back. We don't ask. I mean, and sometimes when you we have looked in the past, yes, we've done a look. A lot of times it's, and I hate to say this is convenience for parents, you know, if you're in Des Moines, it's easy to go up the highway and drop somebody off, you know, or when they're in Des Moines, right? So I think there is always some of that. We, I think I mentioned, the whole state of Iowa is down 2,700 students. Iowa's getting older. I mean, it's just a fact. When we talked at the strategic planning preliminary meeting, we talked about, we have to have an effective downsizing strategy. And I know that that seems counterintuitive to, okay, we need to have a downsizing strategy, but we need to invest in facilities. I don't think our downsizing is going to be like a landslide, right? Is we're going to see, as the populations in Iowa get older, and the number of young people are coming up through the system, it's just going to be less. We're right now between a two and a three-section building, on a three-section side, right? The difference between other schools in our conference that are between a two and a three-section building, we're right in the mix. But I think the challenge is, is we don't use the same funding for some of what we're talking about. Like, general fund money pays for teachers, instructional supports, things like that. But it also, the tax levy, to Dan's statement, does pay for how quickly you pay off your bonds. It allows the district to bond, right? That gives you the extra mechanism to have the ability to do those projects. And so when, when the question was asked, will this go before the public? Anytime we're asking for a GEO bond, it's a vote. The facilities group that is working on kind of that plan, that's been kind of a smorgasbord, we want this, we want this, you know, all that, when they put things together, it would be a GEO bond vote for the public, similar to what happened when we did the vote for the CTE and the fine arts. That was a vote. So the public approved the increase of 405. It did move us up, and we've had that conversation. The question is, as a board, do you want to still be there, knowing that this is part of what the plan is and kind of why we're moving in that direction? If we lose enrollment, we're not going to lose a football team enrollment, right? We're going to still have a football team that needs to be on a safe surface, that needs to have, right, like the stands fixed, all of those things. It doesn't mean we have to have a new field, but we do have to work on the facilities that we do have. And so I would say, yes, it has to go before the public. And so they would have a voice. They would decide, do we want to continue this 405 or not? But the last vote was, I think, an 80% vote, a little more than 80% vote, that yes, they wanted to increase the levy by that 405 so that we could have these facilities.
When was that?
2017, 16, 17.
That was the one that had the air conditioning and everything wrote in it. Just wanted to make sure, I'll put that out there.
How much is it saving amongst the families? Like, if we were to lower it, if you looked into this, how much about would it?
So right now, if we leave it the same, depending on what your house is appraised for and everything else, I think, Ted, show me a calculator, your taxes this year will go up, what, 50 bucks?
Well, depends on what your
No, we keep the levy at 18.67. It would go up $50, correct? At least that's what I would show.
Some of it actually went down.
The difference, why it's not an easy answer is because if your home set went up 15% versus someone's that went up 9% or someone that went up 30, right, that part does make a difference. So if I give you one number, which I know we've talked about, let's say your home's worth $256,000, and that's an actual home in this district, if we leave it the same, and your home, I'm going to go worst case, went up 30% on its valuation, you're going to pay right at 260 bucks more that year for an annual if you leave it the same. That answers your question. I'm willing to answer anything with that.
But if we drop it, that's 30.
You save more than that.
That's what I'm wondering, what do you save if you drop it?
You only spend, or it's $118 more than you were paying before. If it went up 30% and you drop it to 17.67, so it's about $100 difference.
So they're still going to have an increase in their taxes.
In that situation.
This year, even if we drop the 17.67.
So the difference between the two is now about 100 bucks.
So another thing we need to talk about is like the Pebble Fund and everything else. Because I know the community has questions about this, is how did we get that done without a vote from the community? And that was because it's a whole different bucket of money. But there's stuff that could have been used to do different projects around the district. So my biggest thing with this and why I am going to make a motion to drop it to 17.67 is so that maybe we can get a few other things straightened out and under control. This is for the next year. I mean, obviously, if it goes through, goes through, we can change it next year, but that is what I will propose.
So just to clarify, because I understand what you're saying, but I want to clarify, if we reduce it, our recommendation is to reduce it in the 405.
The 405.
That doesn't impact, that does not impact the Pebble or the money we use to do our renovations now.
Yes.
All it will impact is taking away the amount or the speed in which we pay off the facilities. Okay? So we still have the Pebble Fund for purchase, for things, purchasing buses, fixing roofs, all of that. That doesn't, this doesn't impact this. The only thing that we're, I think Mr. is recommending
Is how fast we're paying off.
Is how fast we're paying off the debt.
And the other question I have, Ted, maybe you can help answer this a little bit. I've been told a number close to a million dollars, that if we were to lower this by a dollar, it would cost us an interest. It's more like 40, 50,000, I think, is what we figured out. Correct?
Correct. Because the total amount of savings is like 150,000.
Because most of your interest is being shut down. Yeah. So I, so for me, I guess we'll come around, there's a few things that I'm thinking about on this. One, the main thing is, I understand the concern and need and desire to pay these off in accelerated pace in order to accomplish things that Mr. Weber had presented up and talked about earlier, plus some other things that were in the facilities plan. I think my, my challenge is, there's a step in between there. We're going to have to go back to the public and ask for more money for another bond. And I think a lot of the sentiment that, you know, I'm hearing and that I'm getting right now is, I don't think you're going to get 80% like right now, because there's too much energy associated, for better, for worse, with the air conditioning thing that didn't get done back in 2017. They're like, we gave you money then, why didn't that get done? So one of the things I just want to articulate, you know, to administration and leadership, like, if this stays at where it is and you do, you know, pay it off early, there is going to be a lot of groundwork that has to be done, talking to the community about this plan and getting everyone bought in. And I think that leads me to the second half of this, is there are certain voices in the community and needs that aren't necessarily represented in that current plan. A good example of that is the FFA program. I think we, we lost some things with this that the FFA program used for fundraising and other things like this. So at a minimum, wherever this ends up going, you know, it's the end of the night, we have got to open that plan back up, and we've got to proactively reach out to various representatives from the various stakeholder groups and reevaluate that plan and reprioritize based off that feedback. That's where my biggest, you know, biggest thing is. And then that unfortunately is going to be the easy conversations. The hard conversations is then going out and educating the community, because I just don't think you could get another bond approved right now. But it's just, that's just my conversations with the community. So that's something, regardless of where this goes, we need to be thinking, you know, about that that step is there. So.
I do have another question. So on this, when do we have to have this voted on by? Like this month?
No.
Today.
Today.
It has to be today. It cannot be at the meeting next week. Okay. Well, with all that being said, I would motion, move the resolution authorization redemption of general obligation school board series 2017.
Do C first.
Oh, do C first?
C first, yeah.
All right, yeah. So on C? Okay, okay. So I have to say it afterwards?
Dan, can I ask a question?
Tongue twister.
If we lower it?
Yeah.
How much does that add on to how long we have to pay it off? And essentially, we can still ask for
It's another 40,000. They couldn't give me an exact amount of years. We still pay it off early because we just accelerated so much. And even at $3 a year, we're still accelerated on top of what a normal payment plan is, if that makes sense. We're still, like, even if we've been at $3 the whole time, it had been accelerated over what was required.
If, what, right now, we're set to pay it off in 2027, correct? If this gets lowered by a dollar, when does it get paid off?
Well, that lowers it by 300,000.
Just a date. Just a date. 2029?
And that's about a year's worth of payments. So it adds a year.
So that's a year.
Unless you're aggressive next year and make it up.
Right.
Like, we get together and there's planning, stuff done.
Make sure everybody hears that.
Sorry, what was that?
No, no, he just said it. I don't think everyone, the board members that are voting heard it, so I want to make sure.
Unless you're aggressive next year.
I don't think you're going to raise it again to try and catch back up. So you're going to be far behind.
A year behind. So keep in mind, we can lower this next year, that's one thing. I feel like we are in growth mode right now, because I feel like our district, again, I'm just going to say, I feel like our district needs us. And for two and a half years, you know, there was community feedback. There was lots of information that was put out there. There was door knocking. There were students. There was coaches. So there was an opportunity. So I'm not downplaying that. I don't, I don't want to downplay that work that's been done the two and a half years. And so can we go back again and look at the phase, what we want to change in the phases? We absolutely can. And that's why, maybe that's a work session again, because you guys have different things that you're passionate about, right? But I do feel like if we lower this, it's going to set us back.
Yeah, and that is a concern of mine, right? There are things, definitely, I'd say 80% of the things in the current plan, at least for me, I think are positive, like, for example, soccer fields, right? We don't have any soccer fields. And, you know, changing the tax levy, you know, could impact when those soccer fields come, come to life. But at the same time, you still got to go back and get that bond for that soccer field. That's not necessarily going to be an assured thing. So yes, understanding that this does, you know, delay those things is something that weighs, should weigh heavy on all of us. But also, the likelihood that we're going to get a bond approved is also a concern of mine.
Mr. Gibson, can I ask a question?
Yes.
That might help with that. I think worst case scenario, we leave it, and it allows the next year for this board to go out, me to go out, to bring more members into the committee, and says, now here's the new plan. So now, when we lower this a year, because that is our number one objective, we'd like to lower it to do this for our taxpayers, now we have a plan in place that says even by lowering it, we can still get X, Y, and Z done. That's the way you actually are setting up a plan and being proactive and not getting behind before the plan has been built with the community involvement. So let's add everybody, all those stakeholders that we're talking about, back into those community sessions, over work sessions, over more panels, in order to create that plan so that we know we have the funding to do what all those people want to do over time.
So when you said a year, I just want to clarify this. When you said a year, like, that's if we keep it at the dollar off for the rest of the loan, it adds a year, correct? Not adds a year, every year we do that. I want to make sure, because when you said that, it made it sound a little der�. I believe it adds a year to the life of the loan. Not every year it's off, it adds another year, because that math wouldn't work out.
Right. If you do 300,000, if you reduce it by 300,000 this year, then if you look at your desk, get it up in front of you.
When you say reduce it by 300,000, does that mean the proposal, loaning it to a dollar takes off 300,000?
At 18.67, the proposal is we're going to pay $900,000 off of the loan.
Including interest.
The interest, right? 920,000. If we reduce it and reduce the tax rate, we're going to take 300,000, so it'll be, let's say, a 600. And these are very
Crude numbers.
Crude numbers. We don't have the exact amount, but we, you would have to make a resolution that we would have to come to the exact amount. So it might be 17, it might be 98 cents less, it might be a dollar two less. We will figure that out based on the direction, if that's the direction the board wants to take. But what we're saying is, right now, the recommendation I'm making is 18.67340 or whatever it is. It's bad that I know that. Maybe good that I know that. Now we're saying that's going to be a $920,000 payment off of what we have for the years like 2032, 32, 31, 31. We're going to reduce all of those. What's going to happen then is if we reduce it by 300,000, what he's talking about is now, the amount that we're going to use to pay off that interest is now 600,000 instead of 920,000. And so if you don't make that up, the next year, you're going to pay off, let's say, 600,000. So it's not going to be as, as timely for the whole project. He's just thinking in terms of this next year, the 300,000, because we don't know what the board's going to do next year, or what valuations are going to do, or, you know, so all of those are factors. We can't
101% is higher next year.
The 101%, if we don't get state aid. I mean, all of those things are factors that we don't know. So we can't determine what it's going to look like on the end. All we can tell you is, based on what we know right now, the recommendation of 18.67340 is 920,000. If you reduce it by a dollar, so it's a 3.05 or somewhere close to that,
Yeah.
Then it's going to be $300,000 less on this payment this year. And to project what it's going to be, we can give you a rough idea, but there are so many factors, like we've been talking about the last month and a half, that we, I don't feel good that we can say that definitively.
But it's not going to change the interest that we pay by
Interest is still there. Yeah, interest is still there.
It's a small one.
So with that, I mean, everybody's got an individual vote. I motion that we take the levy rate down to 17.67340.
There's been motion to drop the levy rate, 17.67340. Is there a second?
And what's the rest of that? Body of structure and the superintendent.
That is, she said that was on a different line. That's on, that would have to be
That's on the GEO bond. He's just doing the budget right now.
Because we have to do that first, and then in order to take it out of.
Yeah.
So the only thing that we would caution, yeah, the only thing we would caution is that we were advised to do it in $5,000 increments. So I would like you to
So do I need your motion, whatever's closest to a $5,000?
Yes.
Okay. So, or whatever would be closest to a $5,000 increment?
Yes. That helps tremendously.
Okay.
Can you repeat that motion? I'm sorry.
Thank you very much.
Test for Ted.
I didn't know.
I was going to have you repeat it.
What's the number? He needs to say.
Yeah. So I need an exact number.
He wants to go down one, $1 on the levy.
Yes. Which still means that, like, that person in that particular house pays an extra $116 this year than they did last year. It just hasn't taken them up to $200 and some dollars.
There's a motion to reduce tax levy by $1. Is there a second? Hearing no second, motion fails. We're back on the original item. Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation as is?
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation as is.
There's been a motion to approve the recommendation as is. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three, two.
I didn't vote.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear you. Sorry.
We have to have a vote on the tax levy.
Nay.
So it fails. Did you say nay?
All right, so we're back to the original motion.
When's the bond up again, voted on?
The, well, they, we would have to pay this off and then request another
We can't request until it's paid off.
Yes.
Right.
So we have to make a decision on this tonight. So.
We can't refinance the bond? Doesn't have to be paid off, if we go to ask for more money. I thought we could refinance it.
We have, we have the bond. No, we have the bond until it's paid off. That's what the voters
I know we have the bond, but we can go get more money and like, reconsolidate.
We probably could, but
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
That's what you were asking, right?
Yeah, that's a whole, yeah, that's a whole different
Though I know the short answer they just gave you, like, to start with was no, but yeah, I just wanted to clarify, no, it can be reconsolidated and everything else.
And that's what I'm just trying to
And what I'd like to see also, that I'd like to state here, is the money we got for the ball fields and everything else, I'd like to protect the money we're saving as much as possible and have the district show us like how we are going to use that money and better things we have also.
So the GEO bond that we're talking about has to be used for the project that it was earmarked for?
The GEO bonds.
That's, that's what we're paying up.
The one we're paying.
Right. That's what we're paying off. So we have to use
No, I'm saying the money we're saving there, like, it's two different things. It's two different buckets there, right? The Pebble Fund that we borrowed against, and then this is two different things, correct? But we've already shown, we're probably going to save some money on the ball fields and everything else, correct?
For what was projected.
Yeah, what is projected, if we can, if we can hold our contingencies tight, we can save money there too, which will help better, I think Brayton We can save money there too, which will help better. I think Brayden said bleachers and stuff for the football field are going to be a hundred plus thousand dollars. We're likely going to save that if we can do this right, like we can keep it on track. That right there pays for that stuff or a quarter of the like.
Right, I think the challenge is is that so and I'm not disagreeing, save money is what we're using for this, okay? That's that one cent penny, okay? So it doesn't it doesn't it doesn't set our tax rate.
No, absolutely not.
So the project that we're doing now and what what has been communicated in in past, whether it's in a meeting, a board meeting or in a work session, is that I I was under the understanding that the direction of the board, because of the language of the first bond or the bond we're talking about 2017, um, there's a priority to get air conditioning done. So we can't, I mean, if we're saving money on that, my first instinct is that's going to pay off the rest of the high school air conditioning project. So we can't start earmarking that now for multiple purposes.
Oh, I didn't tell you to earmark it. What I'm saying is like we just need to, all of our upgrades we're doing, like we can start with money we're saving there.
Yes, and that's that's been.
That was all I was saying. Nothing further, nothing more, nothing less.
You're right.
And I just want to make sure, like she asked a question and we almost made it sound like it was all or nothing real quick on the bond. And then I said, no, we can reconsolidate the debt and the answer was yes.
And we have to be careful. Right, because when you reconsolidate a bond, just like anything, you're going to be paying whatever the interest rate is. So if you look at the interest rate of what we're paying on that bond, you know, it's it's not a tremendous amount. We can carry that longer. And, you know, just like anything, if your interest rate is less, then you might want to continue that bond, right? Um, and but.
And not pay it off as aggressively.
Right, you can do that. I mean, that's a consideration. I think the on the flip side of that, though, and this is the conversation that we've had with the facilities committee, is as we look at this and and I don't I don't have a a a crystal ball that says this is what the committee wants to do next. They came up with a plan of how it could all work. But if we change and we want to put in FFA considerations, like a a plot, right, for FFA to grow and and do learning around that, we can definitely do that. I think the um, the challenge we have is any of these projects that we push off a year is going to cost us more to do the project the next year, right? So if we're going to do even renovations to the football field, if they're $5 million to do renovations this year, they might be six or seven million dollars next year. That's a high, right? And I know that, but I'm just for for sake of argument, the amount we save in interest or lowering the tax rate might not be realized as we think it is because we're going to pay more to do the project a year later or two years later. So it it there's no easy answer, right? That's why we have all the voices here because um there are good and bad with each each scenario. But what I what I know is we have to we have to have some sort of resolution on our tax levy.
Yeah, so.
And it's how fast do you have it?
I would like to speak towards the FFA comment because I've heard the FFA be brought up like six times tonight, okay? So one thing I'd like to mention is when this all got approved and made through the committees and everything we had for the new stuff, did anybody think about the fact that we were taking land from the FFA at that point?
Yes.
We did.
Yeah, had a conversation with the FFA teacher.
And it was okay.
Had a conversation with the FFA teacher.
And now we're talking, we might need to save up money to buy more land.
Oh, this is a, yeah, this is a, I'm causing this. This is a passion area of mine. I think that the the voices may not have been as aggressively solicited from that particular demographic as we're going through the process and communicated with on what the true impacts were on this. So the the FFA thing isn't coming from anybody over there. It's coming from from right here because that's, you know, a passion area of mine.
Well, that's the first time I heard you mention it tonight. I'm just saying like I've heard it like five or six times tonight. And like I can't help but think that if we'd have shifted this project a little bit this way, we probably could have saved a little bit more of that prairie and everything else.
And we can't go back and change what's been done. But I think that there was some FFA land when the CTE building was put up and that was so I think that's where it started. I wasn't on the board then. I know nothing about it. That's how it was mentioned to me.
So how do we move forward with this?
Well, then I'm just going to open it back up for another uh motion on on this. Um, so uh and we'll just take another shot at it, so.
Can I motion again?
You could motion again.
I would motion that we drop it to seventeen point six seven three four zero or the closest 5,000.
There's a motion. Is there a second? Seeing no second, we're back on there. Okay, it's been properly seconded. All those in favor, signify by aye.
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 Oppose?
Aye.
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 Motion, do you know it?
We're back on the original motion. Do I entertain another motion?
I'll make a motion to for the proposed, how do I?
For the current recommended proposal.
For the current recommended proposal of eighteen point six seven three four zero.
I will second that.
Been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three, two. We're supposed to say nay? I don't know.
I know.
Alright. That moves us to the um uh, next item, which is the increase of uh board insurance.
We have to do the resolution of the geo bonds.
Oh my goodness, okay, resolution of the the geo bonds.
And you already know what that is.
That is D. That's right. It's what's right there.
I entertain the motion to approve the resolution of the geo bonds.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the redemption of the geo bonds.
Been properly moved. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three, two.
Alright, next we'll go to the increase board insurance share. Um, this does require an action. Um, Dr. Dentlinger, I I will say, if you could walk us through some of this, I think there's a lot of conversation.
Tap into Melissa as well. She was she was a voice in the or she was a a presence in the room. So the insurance committee meets every year. Um, we get a an increased cost. Um, this year, our increased cost was a little bit over eight percent. Um, but we are partially self-funding, so that actually brings it down to about six point eight percent. Um, so the the committee had a, I think, a pretty rich conversation about what that looks like. And um previously, our uh individual teachers, our single coverage teachers, as a as a retention tool in the district, they've been given insurance for free. Um, the single coverage is free. Um, the support staff has a a portion of it that they've paid and that's been through negotiations for, I don't know, however many years before they they eliminated that from bargaining. We always still talk about it in terms of if our increase, so our six point eight percent increase this year is $97,000. We know that we have $62,000 in new money. We know that we have um settled with our support staff for the tune of about $40,000. We know we're in the process of negotiations. And so what happens is we try and give all that information to our bargaining groups um so that everybody understands how this works. I also give this information to the insurance committee so that they understand. And I think the consensus is, at least from the group this year, was we don't really want to change the plan because we've done a lot of shifting and and molding of the plan to still keep it a really high quality plan um and keep costs still low. I know that that doesn't sound like it's low, but when you look at comparative to other districts in the state, our plan is one of probably the top plans out there. Um, so one of the concerns from the committee was not changing the plan. Another concern was um it didn't feel right that the support staff continually paid for um the increases. So if the board didn't pick up an additional part to the share, that went on to whoever was paying for the plan. And so typically that's support staff because they didn't get the free single plan or anybody that had family. And so um that became a question. Can we increase or start a portion of the payment to the teachers that are single covered? I know the conversation has come up with administrators as well. Um, right now, there are, I would say, a handful of administrators, whether that's principals, myself, um business manager, and their insurance is paid for by the district, whether it's single or family. Um, that's practiced throughout the state. Um, you you obviously can make changes to that, but that is, it's it's just kind of the the practice. I I'm not saying I'm for or against it, but I'm just saying that's the way it's always been um since that became part of how the board tried to attract administrators to the district. And like I said, that's that's common. So if if that's something that you want to change, you can definitely recommend that. I'm just I'm just telling you that that's not common practice. Um, I've seen a lot more people have the teachers start to pay for part of the insurance as opposed to changing for the handful of administrators. But again, you guys have that discretion. So this is kind of our our process for what does that look like? So right now, we're recommending that the board share doesn't increase, but we're also asking that part of this amount gets passed on to teachers who have a single plan, to associates who have a single plan and to um uh family member or family plans. And so um then currently the support staff pays $24 a month. We're asking for a $16 increase, so that gets to be $40. Currently, our staff has a zero, our teachers have a zero. We're asking for a $25 increase there. Um, and then we're asking the board, the family, to increase $50, so um the board would then pick up the difference. So it's about $33,000 that we're going to ask employees to put into this and the board's going to pay the other sixty, sixty four, $5,000. Is the recommendation from the insurance committee.
So board's picking up 64,000.
I can get to the exact.
Well, it it's a rough number.
Yeah, it's a rough.
And then the other 33,000 is basically being distributed.
To anybody who takes insurance.
Yeah, but it's a, what is that, a forty sixty split between staff and and teachers? I'm trying to do the math in my head of that 33,000. Teachers are going from zero to 25, so they're $25 higher than the staff is going 24 to 40, so that's 16, $16 higher.
Correct.
I have a question. So I have a question. Um, we've already closed um our staff's negotiations, correct? And what did we agree to give them?
For the increase, yeah, three, about three percent.
What does $16 a month do to that increase?
Yeah, the increase is about 50 cents.
Negotiations yet.
Correct, yep. It's about 50 cents an hour, I think 52.
How many hours do they work a month?
Ten.
I was going to say ten.
I'm going some, I'm going somewhere with this.
Forty hours.
What are you talking about? Everyone's like social stuff, forty hours a week.
Forty, yeah, forty hours a week.
I mean, it's all different.
On average, I mean, let's go to the bus drivers.
Bus drivers are different.
Yeah, let's just do the bus driver while they were in that negotiation.
Yeah, but they're different on their hours.
Yeah, but I would like to go with them because it's going to affect them the most. They will just come out in hours. Agreed? Let's go with the bus drivers. So how many hours a month do they work?
They're working, they get paid by route.
Paid by four hours, four hours a day.
Our hours are half.
Hundred and seventy nine days.
Employee is if we work extra, then we clock it at like half. I guess let me ask a more direct question then. Thank you, Frank. I'll ask a more direct question. $16, the three percent they got on their route fee, what have you?
About $2, yep.
A $2?
Yep.
A how many a day?
I think it's written a day.
Fifty. You got $2.08 a day more.
$2.08 a day more.
52 cents times four.
So 40 bucks, right? Let's just go around it to 40 bucks a month, right?
Yeah.
And their negotiations are closed and we're going to ask them for another $16. The teachers' negotiations are yet to close. So they can come back and negotiate after we make this decision on what they want to do with their stuff.
They don't, we don't negotiate insurance. The board sets it.
That's fine and dandy, but they've got like, it's going to be a factor in their life.
Of course. Just like, just like your increase to their rates.
I'm just saying, so we're taking almost half away from them what they negotiated for and didn't know this increase was coming, like the teachers will have their negotiation still because I'm on that. They'll be able to negotiate still, what have you.
And I, but I want to clarify, they did know. They did know the 97,000 and typically it would have been half done.
We just didn't know where we were at.
We didn't, we didn't know what the board share was going to be. Correct. Yeah, they knew there would be a $97,000 increase.
Last year, the board picked up the full increase.
Yeah, last year, the board picked up the whole increase.
And then it was discussed that it probably wouldn't be.
I'm not saying one way or another. I'm just.
Yeah, I'm just clarifying.
I just want to know where we're sitting.
Yeah.
I I think it's a very fair thing to bring up that they got 40 bucks and it's going to cost them 16 more.
Right.
Correct.
Bobby, Angie and I are all, we're on the insurance committee. We're the, we're the only ones to represent the support staff.
Okay.
Um, the last five years since we formed a committee, I have been very outspoken and very adamant about bringing these numbers together between teachers, support staff and administration, uh equal playing field. We understand there's increases. We did a really good job in the committee massaging things around. My only concern is, and I hope I can speak for Angie and Bobby, and I think I can, is the equity issue between groups. And that's what we're against. You know, we just want to move that way. And we've been trying to for five years and last year was just, there was no substitute teachers. Now we've got a little bit of movement, so there's some sort of hope. And that's, that's what we're asking for.
So I think the the option amongst the the boards is obviously this is a recommendation. Um, the options are to, you know, make a motion to to change those if you would like, um or make a motion to approve it as is. But that's the options you have there. And I I'm going to assume that since we just approved the certified budget, that 63,000 or whatever, that we that the board's picking up the share already, that that share.
No, I mean, this will determine that.
Okay, yeah, but but we can't come and say, hey, you know, we'll we'll take a hundred percent.
Oh, you can.
Yeah, but where's the money? I I think you're doing this because we don't have the money.
No, no.
Make it to other just.
I think this is a reflection of what the insurance committee recommended. So like as Frank said, trying to get it more equitable. This is our attempt to start that process, right?
Okay.
Um, so this, I think, is the reflection of what that committee is recommending or suggesting. I I would imagine that not everybody's going to agree on the numbers we're recommending, but we're trying to make it a transition so that it that it's um, you know, getting closer to what that insurance committee would like to see. Um, but you guys can decide. If you decide you want to pick up the whole thing, then we go back when we were starting to talk about the the sheet, we have movement and and are we going to eliminate a program? That's where we're going to start to look at that.
Yeah, I wasn't suggesting that. I was just trying to figure out what the options are for the board is they're considering on this, so. Okay, so like I said, you can.
Based off of these increases, what is the board picking up? What of the increase?
64,000.
Right.
So it's, so I I have the exact number, so I don't want to tell you. So if we have um.
Sixty something.
It's 55,000 for the board and 33,072, and I will have to um work through that just a little bit more. But there's, there's, it depends on who's taking family, who's taking.
I thought it was 97,000. That's 88,000.
Right, so that's why when I look at the difference.
Sorry, I just.
Yeah.
I was like, wait a minute. I was told 97,000, that's 88.
Yeah, this includes admin, so the board is picking up the admin portion of it and that's not listed here, right? This is just.
So 88,000 to 97,000, that's $9,000 just for the admin.
96, 70 is the difference between support. District support is 22,964, teacher is 23,400, and district teacher is 32,449. So I I will share this with you. Um, but they, I think the conversation is, and you can, I mean, again, if you want more information on this, you can table this until you get a number that is palatable or you can make a recommendation to make the changes. I think what our intent was, and I um visited with um Jen Baughman, who was a part of the insurance meeting and also Deanne Strange. And I think the the intent is this is moving in the direction that that committee recommended. Um, Melissa, you were part of it. If you have feedback.
Yeah, I mean, it was great dialogue. I couldn't talk on the call because I was having technical difficulties, but I could hear all the conversations. Um, and there was representation from from everyone. Frank, you were there. Um, and I did follow up with a couple of people on on this and um they agreed with this and they were fine with it and happy with it. And so I think there was, it's it's a start, like you said. Every year we can look at it. Insurance is ever changing every year.
Who did you follow up with? Like just uh position, not process? Like like support staff or admin?
Admin.
Okay, I make a motion that we table this.
Well, right, yes, that's what I.
I would like, I would like to figure out a little more.
Actually, it wasn't admin. It wasn't admin. It wasn't admin. Sorry.
Support staff?
Sorry, no, it wasn't a teacher.
It was support staff.
Yes, it was. I'm sorry, I had a moment there.
Well, she did talk to me as well, so admin.
Yeah.
In addition to, because we talked about it as well.
Yes, but I did talk to a support staff that was there and is on the committee.
Before I could vote on this, I would just like a little more information. If, if we're able to table, I would, I would love to make a motion to table.
So can you tell me what information you would like so I can get that to you?
How are we going to make it to where we're not taking half of what the support staff negotiated for? That hurts.
I'll follow up with you because I want to play with some numbers, so I'll get.
Yeah, and I think one of the things that we have to be mindful of, because we always talk about honoring the past. For the years that this was negotiated, that was, that was part of negotiations. So the support staff could determine in negotiations how much they wanted on the base, how much they wanted for the insurance. So for years, this has been. And now it's separate. And so since then, the board has either picked up the share or the cost has been minimal of an increase. Insurance continues to go up. Medical insurance continues to go up. So we can say we want to make this equitable, that, that diminishes all those negotiations that happened previously. If you want to do that, that's fine.
But like I said, that's for that year. The negotiation's for that year.
Of course it is.
I keep getting told that, like, it's for that year. We can look at it next year.
Of course it is.
Right?
So if you're, if you're, but I want to say, but there's, there's that, there's just that conversation that.
Is it?
We've been arguing for this equity since the beginning of this process.
Everybody couldn't share.
But it's been, it's been negotiated, it's been part of the conversation. And then the insurance committee took that over. And so now the insurance committee has these conversations, which is representative of a lot of people. And now this is, this is reflective of their recommendation, not necessarily the numbers, right? Because we have to put something in front of you. And so when we increased the, the teachers to $25, that's from zero. So their increase is actually more significant. We don't know what their settlement's going to be, but that's not part of this, right? And we could.
It's not, but they're not negotiating.
But there are people that negotiate insurance at different times of the year where it's not even a question about what the settlement is. And so I think if we're going to talk about it as part of the settlement, as part of the negotiations, then we have to be very careful of that because it's, it's not. Just because our renewal lands at this time doesn't mean it's part of that process. And, and if you want to.
And that's why I would motion that we table it and discuss it a little further because I think, because what you're telling me is $97,000. So the admin's 10% of that increase.
Could be if they take family. Yeah, it depends on what they take.
Correct if I'm wrong, okay.
It could be, it depends on what they take.
So I just, I would like to table it, just so Monica says she has some things she'd like to clarify and play with some numbers.
Yeah.
I would just motion that we table it for now. I don't think we have, need to have a big giant blowout discussion about it. I just think we should table it so the people can maybe work a few things and see what we can figure out.
Is there a timeline as far as like insurance renewal? That this has to be?
We're getting close.
When is that? What's that date?
Well, they'd like 30, yeah, they'd like 30 days, um, but we, I mean, we've been waiting for the state to make decisions. This is just an odd year. We don't typically negotiate with teachers this late. I mean, there's just a lot of factors that are playing in this year that aren't typical. So if we.
And this is the time of year you negotiate insurance, so that's always the same?
Yes, it's, we always have enrollment in May. Yep, we always have.
But you're probably talking about all the new laws and legislative.
Yeah, I'm not going to talk about all that. I'm just saying it's, it's changed the timeline. It's changed the timeline.
Plus, give it a little renewal rate. It's easy.
I guess what that means is that I motion to table this until our next meeting.
The April 30th meeting?
Until the April 30th meeting?
Is that going to be enough time?
Is that enough time to get the questions that you guys have?
It's going to need to be, I think, based off the timeline.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So then I motion that we table until the April 30th meeting.
That's current motion on the table. Is there a second?
I was thinking I have a motion.
I'm properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm so curious to table.
To table it till the April 30th meeting. And then you guys are going to get some time with Dr. Dentlinger.
Or just send me the questions and I'll get it all compiled for you.
Okay. All right, uh, next, we're moving to an informational item only for the 2024 academic calendar.
Yep. So one of the things that we're, we're asked to do is, um, provide feedback or get feedback from staff about concerns. Um, one of the concerns is we used to do PLCs, which are professional learning communities. We do 36 hours of those a year. Research will tell you a, a, an hour a week is recommended. Sometimes that's doable, sometimes it's not. A lot of school districts do an hour early out or two hour early out on Wednesdays or whatever day, they might do a late start time. Because when you look at the schedule, typically it's the middle school and high school schedule. Um, it's really hard to have teachers have common planning times that are in similar content areas. So it's really hard to have two periods where the English teachers are free. Because we need to have flexibility at a school our size for kids to be in English class almost every period of the day. So to say we're going to get two periods together is, is challenging for all of our departments. So what we did about six years ago, when I came, is we talked to the team and we just said, if you're willing or if you're able to meet outside of the contract day, then on Fridays, when we have PD, we'll give you that time back. And so there's a lot of flexibility in that and I think that's, um, part of the equation because the elementary last year, I think, was able to work it out so that they could have those meetings during the day. We couldn't work that out at the high school. So high school still meets outside of the contract day. Some of the challenges with that are, um, there's, there's not time for all the resources to be available outside the contract day. Some of the teachers asked us to put that into the day because they have things going on outside the contract day. So based on that feedback, we had asked a couple of different times about how to structure PLCs, um, what to do so that we could have that common time. So through that whole process, one of the things that we decided was if we just had a common time that we didn't disrupt kind of when families could drop kids off, they could still come to school, they could get breakfast, they could do all those things, that would be the ideal setting or the ideal situation. And so our recommendation, and take this as the, the extreme, right? We're still having conversations about this. But if we bring this to the calendar, it changes the instructional hours that we provide to kids. And there's a way that you would figure instructional hours, they have to be with a certified teacher during the time that they're in the building, working on instructional activities, right? So we calculate hours. So right now, we have 11:40 in next year's calendar, 11:40.4. Um, this, if we do the hour starting at nine o'clock, it would bring it down to 11:17.4. The number of hours we have to have is 10:80. Now, what I'm not recommending, we go to the, the minimum, right? I'm not recommending that at all. But we often build in hours for snow days. In the past, you would just make the day up. We could do that. So you can still get the instructional hours that you want to set, but that's, that's kind of the, the juxtapos. It doesn't change, it changes some of the assignments for, for teachers or associates, but it doesn't change the number of days teachers work, it doesn't change the number of days associates work or the hours they work. In, in having this on the agenda, we're starting the conversation about, is this the best way to do it? Knowing that we would disrupt. So I think the administrative team right now is working on, okay, so what does this look like if, if elementary can have an hour still during the week and it's seven through 12, it starts at nine o'clock on Friday? Right? So we would change the schedule to allow for that. So I, I started this conversation, not because I, I wanted you guys to decide, but because we have to make some kind of decision if we're going to change the calendar. If we want to keep it after the school day, which I think Mr. Beckel, we have a meeting with the high school secondary BLT tomorrow morning to generate ideas around this, to see if there are other options. It might be that we start school a half hour later, you know, and shift the contract day for that day. I mean, there's lots of things on the table, but I wanted to have time for people to understand that if we do need to make a change to meet that 36 hours, that this could be one of the options. This would be the extreme option. So I didn't expect that we were going to decide this, I just wanted to put it out there so that if public had concerns, they could contact you, if staff had concerns, they could contact you, and that if we wanted to, to look at options, we could do that between now and when you would actually vote on if, if there's a recommendation for the vote. So that's the background to this, um, but there's a lot to it, as with everything.
Okay. So first off, I want to talk a little bit about this and talk to my peers and the public and the teachers and the staff and everyone. Want to say this? When this originally got on the agenda, I think there was a lot of energy around that. We got, you know, tons of feedback. I appreciate your willingness to, to chat and bring this as an informational item so we can get it out there. The intent and the purpose of this being on this agenda is now to open up a dialogue with Dr. Dentlinger, Mr. Beckel, Ms. Woods. This is an, an open book now and you can go in and you have an opportunity to influence and drive that change. So I would ask, beg, implore anybody and everybody who has opinions on this, go knock on their doors, like engage in this process. Because when this comes back up, I, 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 I'm going to ask, I personally want to know, did you go in and talk? Did you go in and try and drive the process and come with a solution and give your feedback? So, um, I, you know, I'm taking this moment to say that, please engage and try and drive the outcomes that, that you want to see, um, because that's the most healthy way about going about that process. Any members of board want to say anything in addition to that?
I have a couple of questions. How many PLC hours are required by the state?
36.
Are those required? Because my understanding is professional development is required and you get the 36 hours of funding, but PLC is not required.
Yeah, so PLC is, so it's collaboration. It's called collaboration, whatever you want. I mean, we call it PLCs because that's when they collaborate. So any district can call it whatever they want, but it's 36 hours of collaboration.
And it's required by law?
It's in code.
It's in code.
And that's in addition to those one Fridays a month that were offered the PD, which is that development.
Correct, for any kind of professional learning.
And is there an hour for the professional development?
So I think the purpose, and, and I could be wrong, but when this was written into code, like, years ago, I think the intent was, based on the research, collaboration works best, an hour, at least an hour a week, continuous. If we want to do it on the Fridays where we have professional learning already built in, we can do that, it's just not nearly as effective. Because you don't have the constant conversation and to do a PLC for four hours on a day around the same topics that you're doing every week is just, it's, it's taxing for, for the people involved in that process. So the research, I think, and I could be wrong, but all the research you read tells you 36 hours, it's an hour a week in collaboration around instruction and practices. And so if you put it, you can put it on a Friday, but now you're four hours in that process instead of an hour each week. So I think that's where it generated and that's why we have 36 hours, because we have 36 hours in a school year, or 36 day, or 36 weeks in a school year.
All right, because I, like I said, with the code and I talked to Board of Education to clarify and they said like PLC's not required.
Collaboration, yep.
It's the, the professional development.
Yep.
And 36 is more suggested with the funding you can get to help pay for like curriculum, speakers, things like that.
Yeah, the PL, the collaboration.
Most districts, I understand, do PD and PLC separate.
Right, which is what we're recommending.
Okay.
Yep.
Fine. The, the other thing I want to say also is, if you guys go through this process, you open that book up, get, you know, seek all voices, right? The, um, I think our, our, uh, paraprofessional staffs are potentially impacted this as well, as well as people that have, you know, been through this in the past. I think there was a lot of energy around, you know, this particular proposal has been executed before and there was a lot of lessons learned during that. So seek that, document that and have, you know, collaborative conversations around that. So I look forward to seeing what that collaborative joint outcome comes to. Any other questions on that, remember?
And if you have questions, can you, I don't know if we've said over there they had questions, but just let me know what they are.
I have a couple more.
Yeah.
All right, so, um, elementary. You talked about possibly having them start at regular time and just have that hour late start for.
Secondary, 7:12.
Because they say, you know, you get better, probably better attention out of the elementary school in the morning. So how would this affect doing that hour late start? How would that affect Fridays for elementary teachers?
So I'm going to back 10 steps up real quick, sorry. Not real quick. You know, I don't do anything quick, so, um, except for talk and walk. All right, so I, there's a lot of elementary folks here that can pipe up at any point, please feel free to do so. Right now, what, what it looks like today in this building, if you would have walked in today, kindergarten has, we use, we use three bodies. It's not a great word, sorry. We use Mr. Douglas, Ms. Wilson and Mrs. Duggar, okay? And every morning, they have what's referred to as bonus special. Okay, so this morning, those three adults went to those three kindergarten rooms and they covered those classrooms till 10 o'clock. Because the elementary, we were given a, a directive to do two week, two hours a week, one for PLC purpose and one for data analysis purpose. So those three adults went to those three kindergarten rooms today and Mrs. Bertrand and Mrs. Richard and Mrs., and Mrs. Hanson sat around the table and the instructional coach room where we meet with their dad on the wall and we walk through it together and that allows me to be there. Um, I'm, I'm at most PLCs, um, for the majority, okay? Tuesdays is second grade's day. Now, second grade and other grades are split up, one hour in the morning, one hour in the afternoon. And we don't win on those days. So second grade teachers are out of their room till nine o'clock on a Tuesday. They go back, that's one more progress monitoring instead of winning. It's our kind of, it's our fun day per, per se, okay? Second grade is wacky on Tuesdays and that's how we fit all this in. And we're relying on those three adults to cover an hour in the morning and an hour in the afternoon. On Wednesday, it's third grade, same scenario. That's their progress monitoring day, there's no win. Those three adults go cover those three rooms, an hour in the morning, an hour at the end of the day. Thursday, we allow those people to have their PLCs. But first grade, I should have went back to Monday, first grade is, is unique in that they're an hour at the end of the day Monday and an hour at the end of the day Thursday Monday, and an hour at the end of the day Thursday, because that's how I could physically get it on the paper. And Friday's fourth grade goes, so they have two hours in the morning, where those adults are covering those rooms for two hours in the morning, so that they can do that work. So, my obstacles, one, we're burning out three people really fast. That's, you want to talk about the number of creps that those people, those people are rock stars, but that's not a sustainable model. The other thing you need to understand is what happens in that room is worth all that hassle. When I am at those tables, the change, the development, this elementary growth would not be occurring if it hadn't been for all of that effort put into that PLC schedule. So, while it's awful and a pain, the kids think it's fun, they know, you know, they're having bonus specials, they're learning about Spanish. Mrs. Duggar is the world's best music teacher, if you haven't been informed already, and she, we're good, right? Everything's all good, but to even think we can remove that opportunity for teachers and get the growth and development that we're getting, not going to happen. So, I'm not, I can make it work whatever way, but at the end of the day, we have to have that, and it has to be functional, and their time has to be protected, so.
And the other thing, and just as we talk about this year with some of the changes, the switch, we're now going to add fifth and sixth grade into that equation as well.
Right.
And so, it's not just three teachers, on Sundays, we're going to need six. And so, it's how are we, how are we working that? And we're open to having that conversation to see if it can work, for some of the same reasons that you're talking about, and that's what we're trying to bounce. So, when we bring back the recommendation, that's what's going into that decision. We know what it means when we have the conversations, we're able to engage in that rich discussion and have that data review. We also know what it means to parents to make sure that they have a safe place for their kids, if they're working in Des Moines and they're, you know, coming here. We also know that learning time, when that's optimal, like all of those things go into these decisions. And so, but that's what we want feedback on, right? That's what we want, you know, because if your student's struggling, what, you're going to take an hour away? Okay, let's have that conversation now at the table. Can we add hours back somehow? Start the day seven minutes earlier. Yep, you get all those minutes back. We don't know if that's the best course of action, but that could be the, instead of changing the calendar, we just change school start time, right? All of those things go into the equation. So, I think by having the conversation at the table here, now we can get feedback from either staff, or parents, community, whomever, that this could impact, so that we can make a recommendation. It's not going to please everybody, we know that, but if we can have those voices, as Mr. Gibson said, we can make a plan that we think is going to do the things we know we need to do, that are best practice for kids, to help our kids be better tomorrow, but still recognize all the outside considerations as well.
What does the secondary PLCs look at? Thank you, Danielle.
Yeah. Thank you.
What is secondary? When they have their PLCs, what are they looking at? Like, when our recent one, we've been looking at, like, district initiatives, and classroom management, and teaching styles, and stuff like that. So, it's not necessarily subject-based, so I'm just curious, what are the PLCs in secondary here? What do they look at when they meet?
Success criteria, stuff like that, common formative assessments, common grading practices, bouncing ideas off each other.
Student data.
Student data. What kind of interventions need to take place? How we make that happen? If we have kids that are struggling with like math or reading, how do we get the support for those kids at the high school?
Assessments, working on their assessments, talking, having collaboration about what they could, what changes they could make, and what is going well.
So, with some of that, and just an idea of a possibility, since you're not necessarily looking at content, because I don't, I don't believe there's any secondary that teaches the same subject, could they not meet in their one, like, once a week, in their one open, like prep time with whoever to discuss some of that, and then on those PD days, meet with their cohort or their subject area for like an hour to go over any content issues? Like, just another thought to take, you know, you're not taking every one of their planning periods, or maybe it's just once a week to discuss those goal initiatives, like within the district or something, just a thought to kind of maybe avoid the cluster? To take back to consider, so.
Yep. That's what we need.
And then I also was wondering, so, with the buses still running on schedule, regular schedule, and there being the increased, you know, the students, you know, secondary students, whether they're in the commons or wherever they, what is, what would, because, I mean, it's different than the last time they did it, because I don't think they had, buses ran late the last time they did.
I think they did, yeah.
Yeah. So, they didn't have those students in the building for that hour, but this, how, what would that do with discipline issues? Having all those kids basically not as, you know, just a big group, not as?
Structured.
Yeah. Yeah, and I would say our secondary, and I would, I'll defer to Bobby, I think our secondary is the least bus route, bus travel group. Is that fair? Like, most of our secondary.
Most of our, so if you look at most of our kids that are bused, you're roughly, as far as secondary goes, most of them, and if we're going to talk next year, most of them are going to be seven through nine. And you're going to cut most of those ninth graders in half, because they're going to get their school permit, they're going to drive, so we're only going to be hauling about a third, if not less, of the secondary students into the building. It's going to be at the elementary, and where they're going to get hammered on, and it is, because we're going to be hauling every, I'll say a good 75% of the elementary students into the building.
Yeah. So, what we had talked about, and I think this is where we defer again to the leadership teams, once a decision is kind of, is made, is we've talked about, can there be zones? So, if you need to, when you want to do homework, you come into the library because it's quiet. You want to talk to your buddies about what's happening next weekend, right? You go into a social area where you can have conversations, quiet conversations. If you want to be active, we have the gym open, kids can play basketball or badminton or whatever, right? So, there are different options of what kids can do. We've talked about using that time in the elementary to have interventions for kids who maybe are struggling, and having a structured learning activity for kids. So, the, like, same thing, have the gym open and have, you know, I mean, so we're talking about, if we're going to have those kids here, what do we need to do to make sure they're safe, to make sure that if they need extra support, we're able to provide it? But I think that's kind of the conversation about, if we want to have the option of looking to see if we can have K-6 here, what can that look like? Maybe she doesn't get two hours, right? Maybe she just works it out, so there's an hour for each grade, once a week, which is what we would try to get for the high school. So, it might shift when they do their data review, but then we can have elementary here, K-6, on those Fridays, starting at the same time. The buses are bringing all the kids, but high school maybe doesn't start until a little bit later. That, I mean, so like, all of those things are what we're trying to propose. I just wanted everyone to understand what the, what the, if we don't get any of that figured out, with all the, with the changes of what grades are where, and who's teaching, who's the supervisor of those kids, this is what we would probably recommend. But, like I said, we're starting the conversation, or continuing the conversation with high school and secondary tomorrow. I know Danielle's been working on a schedule to see what it looks like, so what's a one-hour option, what's a two-hour option? So, that'll be all decided before we bring this back to actually have you change the calendar. I just wanted you to see the impact, worst case, what would it be?
Because, yeah, because then my last thought was, you know, if it is two hours, that's changing the class schedule every Friday, so shortening, you know, shortening every class period, so would teachers be as productive?
Yeah.
Or would it basically be a four-hour?
Yeah, we're not recommending a two-hour on Fridays.
Okay.
Yeah. We're not recommending that, for that, for those reasons.
Right, yeah.
And there's no discussion of a four-day school week either?
I was just going to ask.
Well, you can have that discussion.
No, I'm just going to clarify.
That's not been something we've talked about, no.
There's no discussion of a four-day school.
It's somewhat we're moving in that direction.
No.
No. And it doesn't have to be Friday.
Does it not?
Can I say something?
Bobby, go.
And, like I said, this is just kind of off the top of my head. So, I know, years ago, we got stacked up on snow days, we started school early, I think it was like 15 minutes earlier to make up the school time. Couldn't we do something like that to help out with the collaborative time? And maybe let the kids out two hours early on Fridays, so the teachers can collaborate every Friday? And not lose any hours?
I think that is a great, hold on. I think that is a great opportunity for you to bring as a proposal to the calendar committee and to these, you know, renegotiated openings that's going to happen on this, and bring that. And if we have to, to get feedback from the community and do a survey, I think that's an opportunity to do that. But everything is an option on the table. I want to consider that, and I want people to talk about that, and I want to understand what the impacts are, and we can pull the community to get feedback on that, if we need to.
I'm just thinking, our teachers have got to be able to collaborate.
So, yes, yeah, I think that's the biggest thing, is I want, I want everything, I want ideas, options, and people bring together and talk about this. So, yes, I think that's worth exploring.
Is that one of the questions on the, who did do a survey for the?
Yeah. So, okay. Any other discussion on that, Monica?
No.
If you have more questions or ideas, please just share them with us, and we'll take them to the group.
Yeah, okay. All right. And at the end of whatever it is, we're running that back to the calendar committee, right? Before it comes back to the board? Okay, all right, perfect, all right. Okay, finally, last agenda item, superintendent search update. I'm going to give kind of some feedback on the process, key dates, and information that we have of today. So, I'll start with key dates. On April 30th, the board has a scheduled board meeting, where we will go into closed session with Grundemeyer, and we will review the candidate list that applied to date, and narrow that down to a manageable amount. Could be two, could be three, maybe four, I don't know, but it'll be a manageable amount that we'll do on April 30th. And then, May 7th is the next key date, and that is when the candidates that the board has narrowed down will come back through and do panel interviews with the selected panels. And the way that'll work is, you know, we'll have two different rooms. I think Mr. Beckel helped me get those reserved, it's this library and the?
ICN.
ICN room, where the two different panels of people, cross-demographic people, will meet with those candidates. They'll have to bring electronic device, because of last questions, the candidates will answer in live, you know, based off those questions, results. That gets collected up, because the final interview for the candidates that evening is with the board, and one of the inputs that we'll have are the results and feedback from those panelists that were in those interview rooms to consider. And that evening, we'll go into a closed session and deliberate, and if there's a candidate that surfaces, the board could potentially make a decision that evening. So, that's kind of the process, April 30th and May 7th are the key dates. There were some questions in the community around how we came to the panelists, and how that came together, and I just want to provide some transparency, clarity to that. So, everyone knows we hired Grundemeyer, Leadership Services, as our consultants for this, because, like any of us, have had an experience hiring a superintendent, so we wanted some experts to guide us through it. When we originally talked to Grundemeyer, they gave us three common options that they see happening across the, across the state, on how these interview panels and interview processes are happening. The first option they gave is that there are no interview panels, that the board goes through and reviews board candidates, and basically makes a selection hire. They say they see that, there's actually a couple districts close to us that went through that process. Talked with my peers, we did not like that at the end, that was not for us, so that ruled it out. The second option they gave us is a single interview panel of 10 people was another common option that they saw, and those 10 people were appointed by the Board of Directors. Again, talked to my peers, we felt that wasn't good enough for our community and the voices we wanted to hear. The third option was having two interview panels of 10 people, and that were called mixed interview panels, that had people from different demographics in it. Talked with my peers, again, we thought that was getting there, but we didn't think it was far enough. We wanted to have more people, voices in there, and again, all three of those were, the board selected all of the candidates on every single one of those options that they have seen. Again, my peers and I felt that that wasn't good enough for our district. So, the way we did it equitably was that we would have 20 people per interview, so we doubled the amount of people in the room, and then, we had each board member select from across the demographics, and also asked that our principals and our athletic director also, and special ed director also be able to select and appoint somebody. So, we felt that more represented our feelings of, you know, allowing multiple voices to select, allowing multiple voices in the room. And again, the demographics went from support staff representatives to students, to K through six and seven through 12, the board members got to select from that. The only caveat is on the students, the board president did not get a pick on that, because we wanted that to be even, so abstained from that and allowed my peers to select those. And then, the administrators got to pick one from their area. So, there was a lot of questions around how that committee got selected, and I just wanted to say, again, we're going to have 40 people across those five demographics, which is a crazy amount compared to what Grundemeyer typically sees. So, with that?
And the survey data.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, that's the other thing. Grundemeyer had the option to do a survey for those people who could not be in the room, to still allow their voices to be heard. So, that survey went out, and it was open for about two and a half weeks. I think it closed?
Eighteenth.
Yeah, the 18th, and they're using a professional firm. Again, we don't see that data, I don't even have access to that data. I do have statistics. They're going with a third-party firm to kind of pull that together, to give us feedback again as part of the selection process, and they're also going to use that to help derive some of the interview questions for the mixed panel interviews and the board.
We should see that feedback for the, when we go to pick our candidates.
Yes, that feedback, yeah. On April 30th, we'll have the survey feedback when we go into that room. That's correct. So, thank you, that survey was an important part, so. But I know there was a lot of questions on the interview panel, so I wanted to make sure I address that.
Can I get a clarification on that, just because it has been talked about? So, the board picked 36 of the 40 members of the committee, is that correct?
That is correct, yeah. If that math comes out, that's correct. And like I said, we didn't want to select, but that is what Grundemeyer said was most typical, is that the board, of all the places they've seen, did all the selecting. We also wanted to make sure that there are other voices in there, so we went with a hybrid model, so.
So, I would like clarification, so April 30th, you are going to have an open session?
Closed session. It will be a closed board session on April 30th.
So?
Oh, I'm sorry, we will have an open session to address, yes. Sorry, I'm sorry. I thought you, yes, I thought you were talking about this particular agenda item. We will have both. We will have an open session to address the two items that we tabled, and then, at the end of that, we will go into the closed session to address this topic I was just talking about, which is the superintendent. Correct.
What time is this meeting?
I don't think we've set a date yet on that meeting.
Time.
Six.
Yeah, or I'm sorry, time, yeah. It'll most likely be six, but it'll be published on the agenda, so. Correct? Six o'clock on the 30th?
Yes. Yeah, as long as that's good for you guys, that's what I?
That's correct.
Yeah. So, April 30th, we'll have a special board meeting, it'll have an open agenda, and it will also have a closed session for review of the superintendent's. Graduation is May 19th, 2:00, so hopefully you're all able to attend that. And then, the other one I have on there is May 20th. Technically, we're supposed to meet on May 27th, but that is Memorial Day, so we typically move it. I know it's the day after graduation, but we can move it even earlier, but I would recommend May 20th for that date change, if you're okay with that.
Yeah, sounds good. All right, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
My motion, we adjourn.
I second.
Do a proper move to second, although it's in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Pose.